Of May 27, 2010 at 5:00 PM, Commissioners Court Regular Meeting. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence or...
We have someone here.
We have someone here, okay, I'm sorry. We'll go ahead and proceed and we'll start with the prayer and then after that first. And then we will go ahead and allow Sister, if you would lead us in the pledges, okay? But we'll start with the prayer first. Amen.
The life of the United States of America and to the Republic of Puerto Sanz. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas life, I pledge allegiance to the city, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. I'm gonna skip executive session and see if our county judge comes back. He had an engagement which he was at. So I will go to item number three, which is public comment. I know that we have at least one person. Did you turn in your public comments sheet?
Yes.
Tony Reisinger from the Extension Office is here with us. And he has a presentation to make to the court. We didn't have an opportunity to put this item on the agenda, but he felt it was important enough that he bring this information to Commissioners Court. We thank you for being here, sir. And if we can have some help in dimming the lights.
I want to point out that we have a handout for you and we've been giving this discussion down the courts. They've been approved by quite a few lawyers lately and this is some little bit of fact that provides information and how to deal with the situation. That's where the deep water horizon, you gotta get your book, anybody, like I said, you can call me, it's awesome on the right side. I'd like to thank Charles for now the pictures. These are pictures of the deep water horizon, Thor and Germany, the fire on the front of my presentation here. Send us to you today.
Thanks for the reminder.
The deep water horizon is located just off the mountain Mississippi River and this is a nearshore oil ore gas that supply to the mountain ocean gas, ocean gas, which have been traveling at the administration's base. And this is the extent of the nearshore oil coverage off of the mountain Mississippi. You've heard a lot about the root current and its impact or its effects on the spill. This is where the root current starts, it starts through the Straits of Louisiana, up into the Gulf of Mexico, down around the shore. And you're worried about it picking up the oil and transferring it into the East Coast. And what it does is it begins, it is the source of the well stream. So that's what it looks like. It starts a lot of damage on our side to the well of America. And this is what's happening right now. It is pulling some of the offshore oil down toward the, toward the east. So what happened if they don't get the oil spill in control? Well, this is from the fall of 2005 and if you look at it very closely, this is surface currents and you can see from the arrows from like the mountain of Mississippi, they point all the way down to our coastline. So we could possibly end up with a few tar balls on our coast if it doesn't get out of control at all. Because that's probably, I guess that's probably a long shot. You do have hurricane, same thing would happen if you had no tar ball on our coastline. Right now, we have a closure, fishery closure shifting off the Texas coast, down to 200 miles. So that being our Texas shrimp and the Mississippi River, the Mississippi has to fish outside of Texas waters. So normally there goes a Louisiana fish. And so they're fishing wet or east of this line, this vertical line that runs south of being passed. But we also have another closure, another fishery closure now because of the oil spill. So they're being squeezed in a vice. They can't fish to the east because of the flooding, the fishery closure.
And they can't fish in Texas waters, so they only have a small area to fish in. And because of that, their catches have been reduced. They're only catching about 200 to 250 pounds a night. So they're suffering a little bit from it.
What's a normal catch?
Normal catch is about 400 to 600 pounds a night when they're able to fish off the mouth of Mississippi River and the areas that they normally fish. This is Brownsville Port Isabel shrimp production. We usually catch, these are the latest figures I have for 2007 and 2008, we catch a little over 20 million pounds valued at about $49 million. And keep in mind, these were very low prices for shrimp. And the economic impact on Cameron County and the state is about $149 million. The, if you look at the closure, just production from the closure in 2007 and 2008, it's a little over or around 2 million to a little over or to almost 3 million pounds with a value of $9 million and an economic impact of about $27 million. So it is an important, an important fishery during the closure of Texas waters. So has the spill impacted the shrimp fishery? Yes. Currently, Texas waters are closed and 40% of Louisiana waters are closed to fishing. The Brownsville Port Isabel fleet produces about $9 million from Louisiana waters during the 45 day closure of Texas waters. Catches are down significantly from 400 to 600 pounds per night to 250 pounds per night due to the displacement. Individual vessel owners could probably give us better information if we could, or if we could talk to them, we could probably get better information there. We do know some vessel owners have said they canceled fishing trips for fear of oil contamination to their catches and they fear closed area violations. Any losses we do experience have a threefold impact on our county economy because for every dollar a vessel loses, there are $3 lost to the county and the state. A major question is what impact will the oil and the dispersants used on the spill have on future production? That is a big question here. Brown shrimp, our major target species are bottom feeders and a lot of this dispersant and oil drops to the bottom when they treat it. So projected spill impact to the shrimp fishery? To reiterate, the specter of the future is what concerns the industry most and how long they have to, will they have to endure not knowing what to expect? That's their major concern. And I guess I'll conclude with looking at Ixtoc. Many of you may remember that. It was, it was the largest oil spill in North America. It occurred in June, in June of 1979 in the Bay of Campeche. It was a very shallow well. It was at 200 feet. It was an exploratory well. And it was brought under control in March 1980. It released 10,000 to 30,000 barrels or .4 to 1.2 million gallons per day for nine months. An estimated 113 to over 300 million gallons of oil had spilled, 10 times the amount of that spilled from the Exxon Valdez. It traveled 800 miles to the north, oiling 150 miles of our shoreline in Texas. And South Padre Island Beaches experienced tar balls into the early 1980s. I just heard today that between 17 to 39 million gallons were released from, from the deep water horizon. Just, that's, that's the most recent figure. That's, that's a lot of oil. So I'll conclude with that. Any questions?
Well, it's having a tremendous impact now, but even in the future.
In the future, that's the big question because the shrimpers are worried that they may not have a crop next year and many years into the future because of what's gone down to the bottom.
Thanks for bringing us up to date, Tony. And I think making it personal, which is what you've done, the effect that it has on our citizens that live in our area, on the shrimpers and on the economy, brings it into a new light. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Something we need to work on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony, appreciate the presentation.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, Tony?
No.
We will...
David, if you don't mind, I'd like to tell the public about a groundbreaking ceremony and I believe perhaps, is it gonna be in the paper about the railroad relocation, Pete?
Yes.
It'll be in the paper.
Yeah, it'll be, there's a public release going on.
Yeah, I'd like to show this because this will take place on June the 7th in Harlingen on North Commerce Street. I think it's 825 North Commerce. And that's a railroad relocation that will help Harlingen, San Benito and to speed the trains through those cities. And it's been a big problem. This is, the city of Harlingen and the county have worked for years on this and it's finally happening. So it's referred to as Freight Railroad Relocation and Improvements Project. So June the 7th is an important day and it'll be, that's on a Monday at 2:00 PM in Harlingen. And I'm sure it'll be in the paper also.
Thank you.
Thank you for having this, Pete.
Pete, I'm sure that the chambers in Harlingen have been aware, you know, prize of this so they can get it out there. Very good about getting information out to all their members and...
This is kinda like hot off the press.
Yeah.
It just got put on, I think it got put here right when it was finally finalized. We were waiting on some last minute dignitaries responses to finalize the date. Thank you, Tony.
Can we have item 4A?
Sure. Yeah, we're hit at number four. We're gonna go to the Presentation and Resolution section. The first one is Presentation on Completion of Lighting for Cameron Park. Sister?
Sister Phyllis and her group have been working on this for a long time. As we all know, portion of Cameron Park got lit, the highways lit, street lighting, about two years ago now, I guess, when Laguna Heights got theirs. And this portion fell outside AEP service area. So there's been a lot of effort and energy put toward this and she's here to bring us up to date on where she's at. And it's amazing what she and her supporters and folks have been able to do to get this to this point. Thank you, Sister.
Well, thank you for putting me on the agenda. I wish to just take a few minutes tonight to update you on that. Proyecto Juan Diego has received funding for the completion of the installation of lights in Cameron Park. We are very grateful to Margaret Icasey Foundation and to the Daughters of Charity who have at least given at least $20,000 for the completion of this project. As you all know, it's been on the docket since 1998 for the last 12 years. And like you said, they finished one section of it in 2009. And we're hoping to finish all the lights, which is 48 more poles and lights by two weeks from now. We have 38 poles up and AEP is supposed to put a pole up. And I have to say, Magic Valley really has been wonderful to work with because they have also convinced the city to put up seven extra poles in Cameron Park on their area. And I would like to thank Lupita Sanchez and Adriana Guerra because they got all of the easements for us so that this project could go real smoothly and they did all the negotiations. Along with this funding, Proyecto Juan Diego and other community agencies are organizing a litter and trash cleanup campaign for Cameron Park. We've done a lot of health outreach and other projects that benefit the entire neighborhood. I feel very strongly that infrastructure, paving and repaving the roads and putting up the lights are stepping blocks, building blocks for a healthier and safe community. You know, and we thank you for those basic needs and basic services. We all wish to be proud, you know, of the places where we live. And we ensure the environment that it's safe for our children, safe and secure to walk. We hope that this journey will be mutual between the county, Proyecto Juan Diego, and the local community. We must work together and we must change and improve the image of Cameron Park, not only for the residents that are there, but for all the residents in the city. The families have really made a lot of progress. We have 30 families working in our leadership class and they're starting to work on our cleanup campaign. And I feel there's been a lot of positive happenings in Cameron Park and I hope we can continue that with enthusiasm. I feel very hopeful for this community. And I know, maybe not today or tomorrow, but I know this local community will make you proud of them in the future. Thank you. Thank you, Sister.
I'd like to add that the Colonial Access Funds that we've been using in Cameron Park, as we have in other Colonias throughout the county, have made a tremendous difference, not only in Cameron Park, but in the other Colonias, but especially in Cameron Park where we've got about half of the work done, we still, well, actually about two-thirds of the work done, still working on the balance of it. You can go through there and see the impact that it makes and the difference that it makes and the way the areas are maintained and taken care of because they're able to maintain and take care of it. The way it was, it was really, really difficult to be able to do that. But with the, with the new streets, the curbs, the gutters, sidewalks, lighting, it's made a tremendous difference in that neighborhood. And hopefully we can continue that, finish up Cameron Park and continue that in all the precincts in the county to improve the livelihood of everyone who lives in the Colonial areas.
Well, one thing we have learned and I'm sure Sister, you and your group has seen this over and over again, once you have positive things happen, it's sort of like a domino effect. More good things start happening, but it's getting it started and then maintaining the momentum that, that good things continue happening. And I think that's what's happened in Cameron Park. So thank you for all your efforts.
Sister Phyllis passed out for us this pamphlet on Proyecto Juan Diego and everything they do there. And I say everything, it's really not everything they do there. They do a tremendous amount more, but it's just a small sampling of the work that they do. And they do out of the goodness of their heart and out of contributions and working with the community and working with the county together to get things to happen. So I really appreciate all of your effort and all of your work in that area. Continue, want to continue working with you there. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for joining us and giving us that presentation. And look forward to the day when the lights are turned on. I know that when that occurred in Laguna Heights, every time I drive toward that area, I would take the detour around the back on Pennsylvania and go around because it was, it just changes the community's ability to patrol itself, to be able to have more safe places for children to work and play in. You know, crossing the streets, as simple as that, you know, become less challenging, especially those that are impaired in some way, shape or form. So that's, that's a great thing that's going on there. Item B, well, I need a motion to acknowledge the presentation.
So, second?
Second by Commissioner Tamayo, motion made by Commissioner Wood. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. B is mid-year presentation regarding the Mental Health Transportation Agreement with Valley Baptist Medical Center. And we have Constable Robert Hoppus here with us. Robert?
Commissioner, thank you very much.
For joining us this afternoon.
Thank you for having me. Commissioners, this, after years and years of planning, I believe, we have Rosie Cavazos here with Valley Baptist. Back, back in August, we started some heavy discussion on trying to get something, form something in regards to mental transport. On our part, we contacted the county judge, Gascos, at the time and we said, maybe we could assign those warrant officers that JP's have, I believe they were gonna eliminate at the time. And maybe we could work something, I was Valley Baptist. Well, he was able to put everybody back together again and, and get a contract going between Cameron County and Valley Baptist. And we kicked it off mid-August. And so this is our mid-year presentation, just to keep you abreast of what's going on on the contract. If you look on the third page of the handout that I gave you all, it gives you an itemized list of month by month of how we're doing as far as transporting the mental patients. And November, of course, was half a month, we did 40. And if you look December, January on up, it just keeps going higher and higher. And we, our last month's report, it was April, which we had, you know, 120 total. So as you can see, these transports are just getting busier and busier. We have two transports right now that, that transports these mental patients. We met recently again with Valley Baptist Attorney Manny Vela and our civil attorney Delvia and Rosie was there and the CFO for Valley Baptist and other direct department heads and just to review the contract before we could make this presentation. And everyone is on board, everyone's very happy with the way we've been performing it. And Valley Baptist is extremely happy with it and they've gone to the point where they want to suggest to bring back and maybe add a third transport officer to the contract. You know, Harlingen, Valley Baptist gets very busy, but we have from six, seven, eight of them at a time where the officer has trouble getting to the Brownsville Hospital to do their mental transport. So to alleviate that problem, we want to start discussing in the near future about adding a third officer. The Commissioners Court will allow it. Other than that, like I say, it was just a midterm presentation, keep you abreast of what's going on. And if you have any questions, I would like to entertain any at the same.
So Robert, there was no change in the contract whatsoever?
The contract stays the same. The only thing we're gonna add to it is just amend it would be the holiday pay because the officers do get called out on the holidays and which, just minor, minor issues that we have with it. Other than that, everything has stayed in place.
Robert, I know that my being involved in the Cameron County Mental Health Task Force and working with Rosie on several different projects and with you on this, it's been a tremendous asset that you've been able to develop to be able to provide the services that are needed. I realize that all law enforcement has a responsibility to transport mental patients, but it's difficult to do that because of the numbers that are there.
Yes.
It's certainly difficult for the hospitals to have these patients lingering in their emergency rooms because that's usually where they are.
Right.
So the work that you all have done has helped tremendously in the entire county to be able to take care of the people that have the needs and really need to be transported to a facility where they can be taken care of appropriately and properly. So I appreciate all the work you all do. And obviously, you're staying busy. The transport officer is staying very busy doing it.
Yeah, each, each transport takes two to three hours, just for one transport, you know. And, but, but we're getting it done and hopefully we can just, when the time comes to renew this contract, hopefully we can all be on board and just continue it, I think. And Rosie has been working on it for nine years and trying to get something together to get these mental patients out of the emergency rooms and she's done an excellent job. I'd like to acknowledge her. She keeps contacting with me almost every day, daily, over issues. So we're very well together and, and I was just told that we are the first in the state, I guess, county to have a contract like this. So something, a great accomplishment we've done.
You've done a good job, Robert.
Thank you.
And I know Valley Baptist opening the east campus in Brownsville has assisted a lot and made it a lot easier. Of course, you all started after that was open.
Yes.
But I understand that it's much more efficient to be able to take the patients to that facility.
Locally, yes.
And we would certainly like to do as much as that as we can because when you have to ship them out of the county, out of the valley sometimes, it makes it that much more difficult for families to be able to work with them and be with them and help assist with them and be part of the process that they need to go through in order to get back into the regular life.
Exactly. Thank you very much. Robert?
Yes, sir.
On the, on the column, on any one of those monthly transport reports where it has the name of the campus where they're transported to?
Yes, sir.
What does SIG only mean? SIG only?
What page are you looking at, sir?
The last page. SIG. If you go across, okay? It says RGSCSTB, go all the way across and then it says San Antonio, Austin, and then SIG only.
No.
No. SIG? Says SIG only. What does that refer?
I'll have to get back with you, sir. I'm thinking that this might be one that they signed themselves, like maybe a section 26.
Yeah, but would they not be transported to one of the facilities?
Yes.
Well, this one says...
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, let me see.
You referring to the last page?
Yes, I see where you see it, SIG.
SIG only, SIG period only.
I'm thinking that the officer, because there's only one officer on that one, I'm thinking he only turned in the, there's, there's multiple papers of, of the warrant that he has turned in. I think he only turned in the one with the signature only of the judges, the front page instead of the backup to it. So I'm thinking that's what she meant by that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it refers to the documentation?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Because that didn't start occurring until February. You know, that column?
Yes, sir.
Robert, it's really...
I'll confirm that info, sir, and I'll get back with you.
No problem. Thank you, Robert.
It's good that you, that you bring these reports forward because we tend to forget sometimes, there's so much that we're dealing with and it's, it's a good reminder that this is happening, it's working. It was in the works for a long time and we need to hear that. So I appreciate the reports. Rosie, thank you for all you've done.
Well, and it's nice to not get the calls about the concerns of the patients being stuck in the ERs. Because, and not pointing fingers at any law enforcement agency, but everybody says it's not my patient, it's not our constituent, it's not our responsibility. Call somebody else. And it always fell on certain individuals that would go ahead and respond to their calls. And as a result of this program, now you're able to use your patrols where they should be. And use the transport folks doing what they need to be doing. Thank you so much.
Commissioner, one other place, one other, the juvenile detention, we also do their transports. And we've done like three or four from already.
For them, yeah.
We've been picked up from Edinburgh and bring back to them. So that, it helps them out too.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Thanks, Robert.
And keep us informed. Motion to acknowledge?
So, no.
Second? Moved by Commissioner Mayo, second by Commissioner Wood. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item C, Presentation Regarding an Update of the 2010 Census by Mr. Peña. He's here and he has his computer raring to go. Yes. I hope you bring us good news, Mr. Peña.
It's always good news, Commissioners. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is William Peña and I work with...
My name is Julian Peña, and I work with the U.S. Census Bureau. Uh, like you said, Commissioner, this is a small presentation, an update, presentation of two thousand and ten. The agenda. Where are we now? Current respond rate, non, non respond follow-up, what to look for, and share now, when is the census over, and what is next? We're halfway done with the two thousand and ten census. This is only the mail respond rate. The other half is the operation. We have recruited thousands of partners and tens of, thousands of applications for the jobs. Here in the valley, we have two locations, one in La Feria and the other one, the Edinburgh sides. Each location, we did hire close to two thousand employees, a total of four thousand for the valley. Our peak operation started in May first and would be ending in, uh, mid-July.
Be ending when?
Uh, July.
What day?
Uh, the tenth, to be exact. July the tenth. Dates of operations, the address canvassing before, uh, I, uh, address, before the April, for the first two months, February and March, we were recruiting, so we can have enough personnel for the address canvassings. The address canvassings, we, we went house to house verifying that the address was correct. Not only that, we did have a hand computer for the first time in history, a hand computer, double checking that the address was correct, and if there was, uh, new addresses that we, we can incorporate. The three major operations for the census is the mail out, mail back, update leave, and update enumerate. The update, uh, mail out, mail back, this is when we send across the United States mid-March all the questionnaires. The update leave, this is, uh, certain locations of the, of the county in which we were hand-deliver the questionnaires to the houses. The update enumerate, those are areas, hard-to-count areas, in which we go house to house getting the information. The non respond follow-up, this is the operation that we have right now, in which is from May first to July, uh, the tenth. Those are the ones who have, did not respond to the questionnaires. We're going house to house collecting that information.
Excuse me, I, I have a question. Uh, what about the people that have a P.O. box? Just last week, someone told me that they had not gotten a questionnaire, and they, uh, they called me to let me know. How are you handling the ones with a P.O. box?
Well, the P.O. box, uh...
I would think you'd be mailing them, but she hasn't gotten one.
In the event they didn't have one, we had a questionnaire assistance, so they can go and pick it up, this had ended already. I'm gonna mention a number, if she has not received anything at all, it's gonna be on my presentation, the number, English and Spanish, and I have, uh, other numbers as well, so they can call. These numbers are gonna be until the end of July the thirtieth.
And you're advertising those numbers?
Uh, not now, uh, once again, uh, those numbers, uh, we have given to certain nonprofit organizations, so they can, uh, help, uh, bring the awareness to those people that have not received anything at all. Okay? Uh, the percentage of our operation in Cameron County, the traditional mail, we did mail seventy-eight point ninety-two, uh, mail questionnaires in the Cameron County. The update leave, hand-deliver, it was eighteen point thirty-two percent. The update enumerate, those are the, is a two point seventy-six, those are the ones that we went hard-to-count areas, we went house to house getting that information.
Julian, before you go...
Yes, sir.
The percentage return in Cameron County, have you got any numbers yet on how many were mailed out?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
They're coming up.
They're, it's coming.
Well, but I, I have a question of the previous slide.
Let me go back.
Okay. When you add up all those percentages, it's a hundred percent, right?
That's correct.
A hundred percent of what?
A hundred percent of the questionnaires. How, uh, we had three major operations, the how it was diversified, for example, in Cameron County, we sent through the mail seventy-eight point ninety-two. Everybody who had a mail, we sent it. The update leave, eighteen point thirty-two, we went to the houses and leave a questionnaire in certain sections. And the hard-to-count areas, uh, certain areas, we went house to house getting that information from the housing units of the house.
So you're telling me that one hundred percent of the households in Cameron County received a questionnaire either in the mail, by a personal visit within a certain time period, or a subsequent personal visit?
We have not finished yet the operational, we send it, for example, we sent seventy-eight point ninety-two, maybe fifty percent responding. Cameron County, only sixty-one respond, the mail respond rate. Now, we're in the mail respond rate.
Yeah, but, but my question is, of the hundred percent...
Yes, sir.
That you send out, one way or another, of the three ways, you are sure that you reached or will reach one hundred percent of the homes in the county?
Yes, sir. That's our goal.
That's my question.
To count everybody.
But that's your goal, uh, it, it still has to be done, because from, maybe I've misunderstood, but where you say the ma- let's take mail out, mail back, seventy-eight point ninety-two percent, that doesn't mean that you've gotten those many back?
That's correct.
It's saying that you mailed them out.
That's correct.
Okay.
And now, we're in the, uh, follow-up, uh, questionnaires. For those that did not mail the questionnaires, we're going to those houses, collecting that information. So we haven't finished the operation yet. We're halfway.
And you have, and you have a process in place, uh, so that you know the people that you missed?
Yes, ma'am, we have a master list.
Okay. Okay.
The current respond rate, the United States has seventy, seventy-two percent, Texas has, uh, sixty-nine percent, Cameron County has sixty-one percent. In the year two thousand, Cameron County was fifty-seven percent. The city of Brownsville, uh, this year had sixty-five percent. San Benito, in the year two thousand, they had a fifty-seven percent, this year they had a seventy percent. Harlingen, two thousand, the year two thousand, they had a sixty-two percent, this year they had a sixty-eight percent. Combs, the year two thousand, they had a fifty-one percent, this year it had a seventy-two percent. The highest city in the valley is Palm Valley City, they had a seventy-seven. This is only mail respond rate, mail respond rate. So the county has done very well, okay? The non respond follow-up, this is May first to July the tenth. We identify the housing units in our master list, in which we identify, so we can, uh, go and collect that information. Census worker or the numerator, they go to addresses and collecting, uh, the information for the questionnaire. We will count, uh, we will complete the operation in having all questionnaires from every household required by federal law, a hundred percent respond rate. What does the census worker do? Census worker are trained to go into communities, knocking on doors, who have not returned the questionnaires. We go up to six times, and as if, and if nobody's there, we leave a notice of visiting, with a name, with a phone number, so we can set an appointment. Would they work or we work different hours of the day, so we can collect that information over the weekend as well. If after the seven attempts, we cannot find any person or the household, still refuses, the worker will attempt to get the information from a knowledgeable source, the neighbor, uh, most likely, and we will collect that information. We need to count everybody. Census worker will carry a badge at all times, uh, that identify themselves as the Census Bureau employees, will carry some badges. We will never ask for any social security, credit cards, or, uh, money at all. If they do that, you call the police right away. Census worker will not ask to come in, they may do the interview at the doorsteps. The census worker will always carry a, a black bag with a logo of the, of the census as well. If they suspect, or they have a question, they can call the one eight hundred number five six three sixty-four ninety-nine. Anyone who suspect any scam should call the police right away. How can you help us? Uh, promote, uh, cooperation, promote telephone questionnaire assistance as well. Cooperation with the census worker, this is, uh, when they're, uh, door to door, collecting the information, it is very important, so we can provide the information. Just be alert for any scams at all. The telephone questionnaire assistance, they can call at any time, uh, there are seven days, uh, at one of the numbers below, in which they're in different languages, the English, Chinese, Korean, Russian, Spanish, and Vietnamese. Once again, we can, we can, uh, get the information over the phone, they can call the English nu- the English number is one eight six six eight seven two sixty-eight sixty-eight, and the Spanish is one eight six six nine twenty-eight twenty-ten.
So this is the number that I can tell that lady to call?
Yes, ma'am.
Because she has not gotten one.
Yes, ma'am. Now, if, they can call, now, they can go, a census worker, if he, if she's in the master list, we can go and knock at the door as well, trying to collect that information. In the event they go, let them know, okay, she had provided that information over the phone already. The recruiting and hiring, uh, most likely we're to a minimum already, knocking on the doors, uh, this is the major operation, in which is from May first to mid-July. With any operation that we have, we have a quality control systems, uh, to double check that the operation is correct. The local census office will be closed in between September and October. The data, uh, the first, uh, person that would see the total figures for the United States would be the President of the United States, and we should have it ready by December the thirty-first of this year. Thereafter, the first quarter of March twenty-eleven, that's when the read the screen, uh, begins, and also, we would be, uh, giving to the communities and to the cities, the total number of population. The Census Bureau, uh, we also have the American Community Surveys, in which this is a non-stop, on a yearly basis, uh, so, uh, we can collect the, the data for statistical purpose. What is next? Help us get the message of cooperation, so they can open the doors, pat yourself on the back for an excellent job, respond rate, uh, give him, uh, get involved with a Lucas, that's the local up, update census address on twenty-seventeen, that is our website. And I want to thank the, um, Cameron County Complete Count Committee, Dr. Stavala, Frank Bejarano, uh, and the Texas A&amp;M, uh, the promoters, they were in the hard-to-count areas, they helped us out, bring a lot of awareness as well. I want to thank especially, uh, Yvette Salinas, the health department, in which her area went to different locations, uh, of the county, uh, bringing a lot of awareness as well. Yeah, Gabby, they have a big trailer, in which, I don't know if you saw it, in different locations of the county as well. I want to thank the judge for a lot of events as well. We were in McAllen at six in the morning, I want to thank all the commissioners for all your support as well. There are a lot of people, the city, the schools, I want to thank. And we haven't finished, we're only halfway, we are not finished yet. Uh, once again, I want to thank everybody. Any questions?
Julian, thank you. Um, I asked you to make this follow-up presentation subsequent to our meeting of a few weeks ago. And the reason for that was because of, really, the, the misinformation that was provided, uh, to some of the local officials regarding the, the methodology that was gonna be used to count those folks in the colonias and the rural areas. Uh, as you know, uh, the, um, the, the message that was always being delivered is that, you know, everybody watch out their mailboxes, you're gonna get your census form, return it within a prescribed number of days, and then, if you don't, we will return these. Well, as we come to find out, or we came to find out subsequent to those announcements, even that day in McAllen, at six o'clock in the morning, six-thirty, there was a, there was a, um, a, a mail, a mail truck there, and then, symbolically, these people were dropping their, their, their questionnaires in. But it was subsequent to that, that we found that people living in the colonias were not gonna be receiving, uh, their, their census packets via U.S. mail, but rather door to door. And I think that was part of the, you know, and I told you, you know, you guys have had ten years to prepare for this, uh, and it was unfortunate that the, and I'm not blaming you, it was not your fault, this came all the way from, you know, from the top, but, uh, that we were not aware, we were not, that information was not disseminated, you know, to the local officials. And as you know, all the county judges up, up the border had, had similar concerns, but I think that y'all took quick action, uh, the, the questions that I had, you know, to, uh, now, the, the director of the census were, were, were answered. And, and I think y'all mediated as, as much as you could by, by, uh, making everybody very, aware very quickly. I still believe, no matter what the count is, everyone is gonna believe, and rightly so, that, that we will be undercounted once again. I think we have to be pragmatic in the fact, knowing that, you know, people are just not gonna want to be counted for a variety of reasons, and, uh, and y'all just do the best, the best that you can. But I also want to thank you and, and the Census Committee for, for, for participating and doing this, um, and, and, you know, for, for showing up and giving us a, you know, a presentation. Uh, I would like to get, at the end of the program, uh, a, a conclusion, a, a follow-up final, this is our deal, this is what we came up with, this is what happened, to see if we were able to address all the issues that, uh, that came before us.
Yes, sir.
Okay? All right. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge, uh, Mr. Peña's presentation by Commissioner Thomaio? Saying by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Consent items five A through five triple J, are there any items any member of the court wished to take out and discuss separately?
Like G, item G.
G, like a goat.
K.
I'm sorry?
K.
K as in cat with a K?
As in kite.
Okay.
Uh, Q.
Okay.
Um, we have R on there, is there, uh, anything we need to do on that one? Pete?
Uh, that's a different one.
Okay, so that's okay.
Yes.
X.
I was gonna ask that we table item X.
Table, okay, then I don't have a question.
Then we need to table item V, as in Victor.
V.
And, uh, double C.
And I'd like to pull Y and Z out.
Y and C?
Y and C, Z.
Anything else?
Uh, let me check. Nope.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve items five A through five triple J, with the exception of item G, K, Q, V, which will be tabled, X, which will be tabled, Y, Z, and double C, which will be tabled? Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Gats, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries.
Before you go, question? On, on double C, was that a table or a pull-out?
Table.
Okay. You said table, Judge.
Yes.
Just want to double check.
Um, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carry. Before I go on, I want to apologize for, for being a little late. Uh, the Friendship of Women, Inc., were having their volunteer banquet, uh, this evening, and I was asked to, to address the, uh, the volunteers, so again, my apologies for not being here at five o'clock.
The reading, the meeting went smoothly.
I'm sure it did. With you in charge, Commissioner? I couldn't expect anything less. Item G, consideration authorization to release the financial quarant guarantee for the installation of water facilities, road, and drainage for La Candera subdivision in Precinct Two, as recorded in Cabinet One, page twenty-eight forty-five A and twenty-eight forty-five B of Cameron County map records. Ernesto?
This is a subdivision we've been having some issues with for several years now, and I just have one question, uh, Ernesto, the, uh, if, if a lot owner comes with all the necessary paperwork to the county and requests a building permit, is he going to be able to get that building permit issued?
Uh, yes, Commissioner, uh, after tonight, if the court accepts, uh, the agenda item, uh, we can go ahead and do that.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Gats, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries.
Uh, just one question, Ernesto, before you leave. This approval that we're doing tonight includes the one-year maintenance program?
It's a private... No, uh, what we have here is that, uh, the internal roads are gonna be private, so, uh, as, as long as they meet the, um, the, uh, remaining items that are in the agenda item there, uh, uh, we don't have a year's warranty other than, than it is private.
So we don't have to worry then?
That's correct.
So then we can X that out?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Let me, let me clarify that. So, so there, the streets will, will remain private?
They will remain private. We're not bringing them into the county road system, that's the way the developer has agreed to.
And it's in writing?
And it's in writing.
And who's going to keep them up?
Homeowners Association. It'll be a private, that's what they elected to do, and we.
I would put in a guess that it's, they're going to end up coming to the county at some point, but.
Well. That's what was agreed.
Especially since, if that were the case, if they're private, why do we have to approve them?
No, we're approving the.
The release.
The release.
No, but.
But does it have to, well, what I'm saying is, even though it's a private road, it's still had to meet certain requirements, that it is a proper construct, or property-constructed road, and that's all we're saying, that it meets a minimum requirement as far as road construction, so that, you know, the buyer of the subdivision or the lot is, has a good adequate road for a number of years. Five to 10 years, whatever the design was. And that's all we're saying, that even though it's a private road, the road still has to meet some, some design criteria, and that has been met. Once this punch list is, or itemized items that are, that are on that list are done.
So those have not been done yet?
No, sir. A couple items have. A couple items have, since the last time we met with the banker, and, but it will, there will be a done. It will hold the guarantee until they do that. I mean, we still have.
So as a proven, it doesn't?
Release the drainage until those items are complete. So in other words, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, just one, that's a follow-up question. Is there going to be anything in writing in the document where the lot is sold, that specifically lets the buyer know that the roads that are in that subdivision are private roads, and are not to be maintained by the county, so they can't come back later and say, "Well, we didn't know this, we thought they were county roads." I want to, I don't know how you do it, but.
It'll be in the plat, it'll say.
Well, but, yeah, but a lot of times, they don't see the plat. I mean, they, you know, I want to, in the, in the warranty deed, or in the deed of trust, or whatever other instruments out there, is there any language that we, as a county, can ask the seller or the title company to place within the document? So they acknowledge when they sign and they buy, that these are private roads and not county-maintained roads?
Generally, when they buy something, they will be getting a plat along with the deed of trust and everything else. And it's really more likely that they'll read the plat than the deed of trust, which may be, you know, eight or 10 pages long. And it should say on the plat that it's a private road.
Well, sure, that's what I'm saying, but I guess a judge is saying, how do we ensure that that is passed on to a deed or something?
And they sign, they sign the plats also, as they get it.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I think that's a very valid point, and that's, Royal Estates, remember? I'm sure you've heard me bring that up, where all these lots are sold, and the roads are, belong to a homeowners' association that is defunct.
That's why, that's why I asked that. And I can, I can almost put my money on it, that in a couple of years, you're going to be having the constituents call the commissioner, whomever it is, and say, "When are you fixing the roads?"
We pay county taxes.
And you know, if Lou is here, he can tell you, in my precinct, that's happened over and over and over again. It might be in the plat, John, but they're not, the majority of them will not be aware. They're glad they're getting the lot, they're excited about building a house, and, you know, later on, here we come to the county.
Yeah, good afternoon. The plat was recorded, and the plat does state that it's a private road. I am not as sure if they're going to have a separate instrument to specify that, so.
It's what we've done before, so.
It hasn't, it hasn't.
It hasn't been done, that I know.
Can we have, I mean, one sheet of paper in your offices, when someone comes, even at that, when someone comes to buy a building permit, to build a house on, you know, one sheet of paper can be given to the individual at the very least and saying, "Oh, that's a private area, you know, you need to read this."
Yeah, it's not, it's not a requirement, right? But we, but what we can do is maybe amend.
Can we make it a requirement?
Add a policy to it, or a regulation.
Well, that's, you know, I think that, I think that placing that type of writing on a plat with a font of 32, or, I mean, a font of like .8, where it's tiny, you can't see it, the fine print, we need to be a little bit more visible, in terms of when they know that there's no doubt, that when they bought it, either the warranty deed or the deed of trust, I don't know of any people that look at the plat, they just look at the, here it is, the line, but they don't look at that easement and the right-of-way, and they don't look at all that little fine print. But if you're saying it gets platted, that's fine, but when they buy the piece of property and they get the plat, they get all that, on the plat, it says, does it say "private roadway"?
Yes.
And does it have it on the road?
It has it on the road, and.
On the general notes, right?
On the general notes.
But, you know, but, you know, it's like, not, you know, all county roads are public roads, but not all public roads are county roads. So when they look at a private road, it may not get to them that, you know, kind of, you know, cross the bridge between a private road, a public road, and a county road. So, and I don't, I mean, I'm just throwing things out, I think Commissioner Thomaio is right, because I've experienced it when I was a commissioner. I mean, they go ahead and take them in, and then they bring them up to a standard of some sort, say, "Okay, now we want you to take them over." And, you know, future commissions may do that, they may want to take them at some point. But at least now, there should be some language in a large font, that's, you know, underneath it says "private road," in parentheses, "not a county road." Or something, I mean.
I believe that we did, I don't recall, but I did recall that it says it will not be maintained by Cameron County.
Where does it say that?
On the plat. That's typical of what we do, I would have to verify that.
Yeah, you might want to do that. I've never seen that on plats, where it says "will not be maintained," because it's not, it's not really relevant to the property.
Right.
And if the court wishes to do that, I think we still can do it to the plat.
Well, I.
Well, I think we need something more than just the plat.
I think you should, and I think it should be, I mean, I've seen those plats, and the fonts are like .5, I mean, they're tiny, you'd have to get a magnifying glass to read it. And it's got to be something a little bit more onerous, something a little bit larger with a font, minimum font 10, font 12, you know, that, so there's no doubt in the property owner's mind, because I think what Commissioner Gats has said is right, you know, we pay county taxes, well, yeah.
I mean, you guys hear the stories, you know, I mean.
Okay, we all just take care of it, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but can you just go ahead and, we just want to make sure that we have enough information out there to the public as they're buying this, that there's no doubt.
Is it a gated subdivision?
Yes.
And it's got a lock gate, and you have to have access to go in?
Well, they haven't built the gate yet, but they're building it at the moment, at the.
So it will be a controlled access subdivision?
Yes.
Well, hopefully, that homeowners' association, and I'm just going to throw more fuel to the fire here, in one particular subdivision, that supposedly the roads were private, and they had a homeowners' association at the time, I guess it was developed, it was before my time, but they came to me wanting the roads fixed. They disbanded.
The homeowners' association?
The homeowners' association disbanded, and the county is, I'm not, I'm not saying that this isn't a great subdivision, I'm sure it is, I'm just saying that we, at least as Precinct 4 goes, I continuously keep having that problem. Private roads that I'm sure were on the plat or whatever, I'm not in the engineering department, so I don't know how you handle that process, and they come to the county.
All right, I agree.
A royal bank, I keep going back, defunct subdivision, okay? You know, and we haven't even figured out a way how to go in there and maintain them, much less do anything with them. So how do you deal with those issues? Maybe a good issue to address next week on Thursday?
With TAC?
With TAC legislatively, maybe we can have you all come up with something for the next legislative session.
Something with teeth.
Well, again, the way it's always been is that the developer has the option.
No, and I don't, we're not taking that away.
It'd be to us, I mean, that's fine.
No, no, and I tell you what, I want them to keep that option, I want to keep those roads private, I mean, that's their deal, but, but I think what, when you have these homeowners' association that, you know, all of a sudden, you know, just leave, all of a sudden Cameron County becomes the maintainers of choice. And we're the ones that have to go out and maintain and fix and that kind of stuff. So, I don't know, just, you know, y'all need to think outside the box a little bit, because these are different times now, and just kind of think about how we can best protect ourselves from, you know, from future maintenance issues.
And Judge, I think that this is, Ernesto said, this is the way we've always done it, or it's always been that way. We have to change that mentality, sometimes, just because it's been done that way all the time, doesn't mean, it hasn't been working, guys, I tell you. I can prove it, that it hasn't been working. So I don't have the answer, but I think that we need to research that and see how we can try and solve that.
Well, especially when.
It's not working.
Especially when our own inspector has already told us that there's issues on the road. I mean, that's like a red flag saying, "Hey, guys, you know, you're going to have some problems."
Okay, on, we mentioned the TAC meeting next Thursday. Were they going to send out, or are we supposed to send out an email to everybody that TAC was going to be here?
We are.
Okay, all right.
I got an email from someone, I can't remember.
You got one already?
I did.
I don't remember, okay.
I'm not sure, Judge, but I'll follow.
Well, next Thursday, I'm not sure of the time, I think it's at 2:00?
2:00 to 4:00.
2:00 to 4:00. In this courtroom, we're going to have the representatives, the tax association counties to talk about any issue that you believe is relevant. And really what it's doing is, will be setting the, setting the tone for the 2011 legislative session. So anybody has some issues out there, bring them down. Don't talk about raises for everybody and all that kind of, we're talking about policy and rules, just something like this, you know, so be prepared for that, if y'all can, if you can do that.
Plus, we also have a test force meeting that we're having ongoing with, in Austin, about subdivision rules and regulations.
Oh, good. And you're on that board.
And so maybe that's something we can look at and approach there. We're kind of at the end, pretty much on some things that need to be changed, but that's another way to.
Well, there's something that's going to come up, and this affects all of us, but more, maybe y'all can provide some insight, is on giving counties limited ordinance-making abilities in the rural areas. And I think we can get that passed if we limit it to border communities. If we try to go everywhere else, it's going to fail, but if we limit it to border community, I think we can have, we have a good chance of passing that, so keep that in mind. Next Thursday, 2:00 to 4:00. Okay? Thank you.
We already.
Yeah, we already did everything, okay. Item K, consideration authorization for final plat approval for Gomez subdivision, Precinct 4, being 10 acres of land comprised of 1.17 acres out of Lot 17, and 8.83 acres out of the reserve area. Forte Land subdivision, recorded in Volume 4, Page 94, map records of Cameron County, Texas.
What I wanted to double-check on, Ernesto, can you refresh my memory? You checked on the drainage?
Yes.
And how is it?
We do have a drainage district that has jurisdiction.
Okay.
It's a small subdivision, it will be able to drain into the.
So there's, it's within the drainage district, right?
Who is the drainage district? Because is that K that we're looking at it?
Yes.
Yes.
It says none on the drainage district.
That's why, that's why I called him up here, I thought it said.
Says none?
I thought it says none, or was that a typographical?
It says there'd be no. Yeah, something about the irrigation district.
Irrigation district? But we're talking about drainage district.
I'm talking about drainage.
Within that realm, there is, there is a drainage that it will discharge to, so it does have drainage.
How is that, repeat that?
There is drainage provided for this subdivision, not necessarily under the jurisdiction of the drainage district, but there's a channel out there that will convey water to it, or from the subdivision to.
You were over there in person?
Pardon?
You were on site?
We talked to your staff, Commissioner, we asked Marty to go out there.
Okay.
And I said, "Not a problem," showed them what, I didn't go myself, but Roland did, and my assistant, one of my assistants.
So it's an irrigation district and not a drainage?
That's correct.
And who maintains that ditch?
It probably, there is no maintenance, like other areas, they don't have jurisdiction.
Is there a jurisdiction on that ditch? I mean.
No.
See, the issue, the issue with that is that, and I'll give you another example. We got free money from the state, colonial money, to build a road in Leal Mary Dale.
Yes.
Well, guess what? There's a ditch back there where it's rained to for the last 40 years, but now it belongs to no one, and the plans that were made to build the road on it lead in the wrong direction, and if we want to change it, it's going to be another $300,000, and there's not enough money to do it. And, you know, I think that, I think that all of these little things become issues. And if they are not physically inspected by someone and delineated in regards to, I mean, we've had public works take on cleaning of drainage ditches all over this county that belong to no one, okay? And we're approving subdivisions every meeting in which we don't do our homework. If, if they don't drain, and if there's not a proper entity in charge.
Well, I'm saying they are, they do drain, Commissioner, but there may not be a, like in many areas of the county, there may not be a receiving drainage district, but that doesn't mean you can't run your drainage to it.
Yeah, but if it's not kept up, it's.
I understand, but that's an issue that's overall, over the county, unless you want to stop development.
But, no one is saying stop and develop.
No, no, but that's what I'm saying, but they got to convey the water somewhere, we saying, rules require that you have to have a discharge.
But we have, we have laws now that deal with runoff.
Yes.
We have to comply with.
Yes.
We're waiting for environmental work to be done on every one of our ORCA projects on existing roadways.
I understand.
Because now they require the drainage component.
Yes.
And we can't get started until that is satisfied to ORCA, okay? And we go through this process of accepting subdivisions, and we don't know who's going to be responsible for draining it.
Well, because we have a lot of blank areas in the county, we know that, Commissioner. La Feria is one area that we don't have a drainage jurisdiction.
In Santa Rosa.
And it's, oh, Santa Rosa, La Feria Primera, all the.
Well, what I wanted, what I wanted to know, Ernesto, is.
We don't have it.
If you had been out there personally, and, but you said you sent, I guess, one of your assistants?
Well, I mean, I didn't go myself, but I did ask Roland, and everything is fine. He meets the minimum requirements for drainage, and he will drain.
If that ditch is kept up?
I understand, but there's a lot of.
So we're going, we're going in circles.
Well, I understand, but there's a lot of ditches that are not kept up, that's all I'm saying. The county is deficient in that, because we're not, we don't, we're not a drainage district. And if the only drainage that are, the only drainage districts that are, that have jurisdiction, we follow up with them, make sure that they maintain their systems, so it's their obligation to maintain. Those that don't, it's like anything else, Commissioner, out there, that it doesn't have jurisdiction.
Well, let me go back and clarify something. You said it is in an irrigation district.
Yes.
But that ditch does not belong to the irrigation district?
No, it belongs to the irrigation district, but they use it some. A lot of times what they do is they have canals and to run their irrigation system. On the side of those canals, there's what we call a seepage ditch, which is still a conveyance of runoff that you can use. And a lot of times, that's where the water goes, is it goes into that, from the borrowed ditch, onto a collection near a canal or a drain, drainage system. But there's a lot of areas that we don't have jurisdiction.
And so the irrigation district is Santa Maria irrigation?
It does drain.
Well.
Not effective if we had a juris, no, not as good as if we had a jurisdiction with it, obviously.
One of the comments that has been signed off on and signed by a registered engineer, "Since the lots will be two acres gross, the impact of building one residence per lot will cause insignificant effect on the drainage ditch."
That means that the runoff is very little.
Yeah. That helps us to feel comfortable about.
You know, it's not like a 50-lot subdivision, it is a small area that will be drained, but it still has to meet the drainage requirements of the state, and/or regulations, and also there is a drainage report that goes with it, and it has to be done by a registered engineer. He does the analysis and review it, and if he meets the requirements, then he meets the requirements for drainage.
Well, I think, you know, Ernesto, that they might have an engineer, but sometimes engineers, engineers go ahead and approve things, and then.
I understand.
And not impact the neighbor down the street.
I understand, sure.
Okay?
And that's required.
Those are the rules.
Yes.
Okay?
But what he's telling us is that it does drain, but my concern is it's draining into no man's land.
I understand, but there's nothing there within that area to drain it. Where are you gonna drain?
Mr. Hinosa, I'm assuming that you all brought this to us because it meets the, whatever they are, minimum requirements, at least.
Simply, yes.
To conform to the subdivision rules and regulations that the county has.
Called for in the subdivision rules and regulations.
Okay.
It meets the minimum requirements.
So we can have a subdivision developed in an area without a roadway that is not up to county standards, in which there's an eighteen-foot wide easement, and you're willing to put your seal in egress and ingress to that subdivision, knowing that two cars can't pass each other on that road? That's what you're telling me?
I'm not sure if that's what we have here, though. Is that we refer to this one here?
That's what you're telling me.
No, it has to have a minimum-
What is the minimum requirement on a road to be accepted into the county road system today? No, a county right-of-way. What's a minimum requirement?
Sixty feet.
Sixty feet. What's a minimum width of a road to be accepted today in county standards?
Twenty-four, if it's in a subdivision. If it's a county road, it's only eighteen feet of caliche, that's it.
Right.
That's what is required, the minimum, six inches of caliche. If you're talking about a developed subdivision, and it's a twenty-four-foot road, sixty-foot right-of-way, that's the minimum of the county with the-
Is this a subdivision?
Yes. The internal road is-
I read my case.
Well, the internal road meets, if there's any, it meets the requirement. You're talking about off-site roads.
Well, you gotta get to the-
I understand.
Commissioner Wood had that issue, remember, in one subdivision? There was a real nice subdivision in your precinct, John, where the seller of the lot said, "The county's gonna build this road for you," and you're like, "You're talking-"
There's a lot of roads, Commissioner, that lead onto subdivision.
You recall that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, you know, the burden is placed back on the county for drainage and irrigation when we really need to figure out what to do on these issues.
Well, I think, I think this, this is a much broader picture than what we're talking about right now. I'm not concerned just about this subdivision. I think we need to, if we're, if we, if you say that this subdivision is meeting the minimum requirements-
Yes.
Then there's something wrong with the minimum requirements.
That's what we have, Commissioner.
Well, that doesn't mean we should have them.
We can change them if you want us to change them.
Can we change them?
Sure, we can.
Are they, is it county prerogative?
Yes, the court has the prerogative to change any of the conditions that are in here in this, in this rules and regulations.
Well-
Except maybe not, if you're, if there's a state statute, then I don't know if you can do that, but, but, but if it's a subdivision policy or rule, or we can change that, the court can change that.
You know, I feel sorry for the folks buying lots in that subdivision, that's my concern. The ultimate person that gets, ends up a situation that is, you know, they can't figure out what to do, you know?
Well, Commissioner, I'll tell you what they've figured out. They've already figured out what they're gonna do. They're going to come to the county. What do they always do? I know that I sound like a broken record.
Well, if, if they want that-
But that's exactly what happens, and they're not gonna be coming to you, Ernesto. They're not becoming to Rolando or Alex, they're gonna be coming to the people sitting up here. And, and that's who they should come to, because we're voting and letting, and letting this go by. I, I think we need to look at the minimum requirements. We definitely do.
Well, why don't we do this? Because we're not gonna get off-center.
Well, Judge, excuse me, real quick, if this plat meets the requirements that are set out by state statute and our own-
We have to approve it.
Then this is an administrative decision. It's not, I don't think you have the discretion not to approve it just because you're not happy, or you're, you're concerned about what might happen in the future. If it's meeting the requirements that are set out and set forth, and that's the recommendation you're getting from your engineers, then I don't think you really have the discretion to say-
Delvia, I'm not saying that we can't approve it. I know we have to. If it, what I have said, and, and I think we need to keep looking at this, and not just looking at it, but doing something about it. We need to change, we need to bring change. We need to change the minimum requirements.
And that, and you can do that, because you can be more strict than that.
Before we go to the strictness, I disagree with legal. I think that if, if the law says that it comes to Commissioner's Court for approval, I can vote any which way I want. I'm not gonna, you know, there's nothing that says that I have to vote to approve this subdivision because it meets the requirements. Then if that's the case, and if it's just a, an administrative issue, why does it even come to us?
Because that's what the state law says, and it's gotta be approved by the-
Well, then why should it come to us if we can't vote it out?
Because what's happening is, by the time that it, it gets to the final plat approval, these guys are telling you that it's ready to go.
And Delvia, I can tell you right now that there's been many times, and, and maybe not necessarily these engineers, that, that subdivisions were approved, the final plat was approved, and we're in trouble in those subdivisions.
If, if the court wants to change some of the county's own requirements, the court can make them more strict. They just cannot make them less restrictive than what's already set out by state statute. So if that's something that you wanna look at, that's something would-
So, so you're telling me that we, we can, we can approve a subdivision knowing that there is no county road leading to it but a private road?
I'm telling you, if, what these guys are telling you-
That's what you're telling me. It's a private road.
That it meets all the requirements.
It's a private road in a different county.
But you know, let, let me address Delvia.
I mean, we can-
Yes, they're approving-
Publicly dedicated road that's never been, I mean, it was on Fortoland subdivision way back when.
Hey, Rolando, you interrupted me.
Yeah, if we can just go ahead and just, just do one at a time, and then when they get done, then you can interject, all right?
Delvia, I disagree with you that we have to approve something because the administration is telling us to do it.
I'm, I'm not saying that you have-
Because we have the ultimate responsibility.
Yes, ma'am, but what I'm saying is-
And when there's problems, when there's problems, we're the ones they come to.
Yes, ma'am.
And I see a potential problem here, as well as in that other subdivision that we just approved, again. But I can understand that if we have not changed the minimum requirements, we have to approve something, whatever subdivision they bring to us, if they meet the minimum requirements, the, the local and the state, and that's why I'm saying we have to address that.
I, what I'm saying is, if the court has, if they find that there is something that is not met, like one of the statutes, one of our own requirements, of course, then you're not gonna approve it. But if they're telling you everything has been met, then it's, you know, it's more of a, almost more of an administrative decision because all the requirements have been met. If you choose not to vote for it, you don't have to, of course, but then you're giving a developer cause to come back and, and say, you know, what did we not meet? What didn't we not comply with, and maybe, you know, come back and try to sue the county because we've delayed their, their development.
I will repeat what I already said.
I think, I think we need to huddle, too, just like you guys huddled and come up with another play.
I mean, certainly we can, I mean, certainly we, we can table it and, 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 you know, look into the issues that you're looking at, but, I mean, they may come back and still have the same plat.
Yeah, right, right now, I have, I have to, and I, I agree, I take exception. I think that if it's coming to Commissioner's Court for approval in its routine, then, then what's the purpose of bringing it to Commissioner's Court for a routine approval, number one? Number two, let me, and I don't wanna, I don't know who this, these folks are, but I hate to, to pick on them. They, they, they followed the rules that we have in place. What I'm hearing is that, that they, they did everything, they signed off, you signed off on everything, and now they, they may receive a, a nay. But then I think if we do that, if they've met everything that they've been asked to, to, to meet, then if we do not approve it, I think we, we could open ourselves up to some kind of future discussions. So the, the call between us now is, it's here for approval or not approval? If we don't approve it, then we need to stand ready to, to defend that as to why. If, if we're gonna change the rules in the middle of the game, I know that you all were huddling, but, you know, you're, you're not gonna change the rules.
No, no.
Yeah, the rules are what they are. I, I think that it, it does merit that we look at these, these requirements that we have. I, I don't think that using this one in particular to single out at this point, when we've probably had many subdivisions that we final-platted that, that are probably comparable to this, at this point, the, unless there's some compelling reason other than we think that the requirements aren't strict enough, we, we should've thought about this at some point, because now, what we're doing is we're, we're saying, oh, well, we don't agree with this, they should be, you know, a wider road, a wider this, but that's not what we have on the books right now.
No, I don't, I, I, I'm not saying that, that we can't approve it because of the fact that from the get-go, when they got going, this is, these were the requirements they could do.
That's correct.
And there's nothing we can do.
Yeah, and, and I agree with you.
But I pulled it because I want a ma- make a point, and I'm gonna be making it at every single meeting, that something has to get done to change this.
And I, and I think what this, you know, we're, we're coming up to, to a new budget cycle, and there's no really perfect time, but this may be a good time to, to address these issues. If we need to, to, you know, restrict, or implement, or change what we have, well, let's do it now. And, and that way, everyone is playing by the same rules. I, I don't disagree with you, Commissioner. I, I think that, that the way we've always done it, and I know you're gonna regret ever saying that, is, is not always the right way to do it. And, and, and I, you know, we understand that, but if, if we wanna change, well, then let's take it through formal action of the Commissioner's Court.
Yeah, but I don't think that, what I'm referring is not to change, what I'm referring is to whether or not the road that leads to the subdivision meets minimum county standards.
Yes.
Well, it does because it's not in the county.
No, no, but, but you know what? It is for the record.
It may meet Hidalgo County standards.
No, no.
Right? Didn't you say that the road-
It is publicly dedicated.
Is in Hidalgo County, so for all we know, their, their standards are fourteen feet. We do not know what they are. But, you know, now, you're not expressing an opinion on the, on, on that particular road, are you? Because you don't know what Hidalgo County standards are.
Exactly, but we know that it is publicly dedicated.
Well, that's fine.
But a while ago, you said it was private.
So that's all I'm saying, that it does have public dedication, so that the developer can-
And it's a caliche road?
I think it's partly, the first part, because remember, we're, we're dealing with county lines, county lines.
How much of the road-
Hidalgo and Cameron.
How much of the road is in Cameron?
So we're dealing with a boundary line there where roads are split. When you do the meets and bounds of Cameron County, Hidalgo County, there's a division line.
But, but the road that leads to the subdivision is in Hidalgo County?
No, on, only the road. Half of the road is in Hidalgo, half of the road is in Cameron County, and the subdivision is in Cameron County. That's the only, this is one that's very particular, very peculiar because of the circumstance where it, where it lies. And, and it has to do with a road division. The road division is half and half. Yeah, it looks odd, because if it's, if it's sixty-foot a right-of-way, well, the only county, county only has thirty, and what can you do with thirty feet? Well, the only thing we can allow is eighteen feet within the thirty feet, because we don't have jurisdiction on the other side.
So in spite of all that, it's still meeting minimum requirements? Is that what you're telling me?
Well, that's what I said in the first place when I came here.
Okay, to clarify things, Commissioner Garsa, because they've changed the story a couple of times. It's not a private road, it's a dedicated road, and half lengthwise, that's what we're saying? Half of that road lengthwise belongs to Hidalgo, and half of it to Cameron County.
That's correct.
Well-
Yes or no? Or is going, call it a fair or not?
It'd be an, it'd be an, a lot of it is outside, so it's not more than that.
I just read on there, it says private road, okay?
But there's a division there, Rose, correct.
Okay. See, on the, on the map that I was provided-
Yes.
It says private.
It says private road, on the map that I was providing, which is the second page of the document we received.
We can't get around it, it's gonna have to- Whether it's public, dedicated, or private, it still meets the minimum requirements.
The map page that you all provided, the second page?
Well, but see, you gotta remember, this is a-
All I have to go by is what you give me.
It's a vicinity map, I know, but the vicinity map, the way it's written there, I don't know who wrote that private thing there. Do we, this comes from the engineer, right? Or what is it?
Comes from the engineer.
Comes from the engineer. But, but the private road could be on the other side.
Even the developer that did this says private.
Well, does it really matter whether it's a private road or a, or a public road? I mean, it's not a county road either way, so-
It still meets the minimum requirement.
Yeah, I don't wanna get into semantics here, but, look, we, we, we have a couple of options. One is to, to deny the plat or approve it. I would recommend that, because they've met everything, is to, is to approve it.
They're telling us it meets the minimum requirements.
Yes. Yes.
You're not gonna change that story?
No, no. It meets the minimum requirements.
Okay, and you're telling me that a subdivision can be approved without public access to it from a county road?
But it does have public dedication leading to the subdivision, right? Even though, I mean, what I'm saying, what's running on the subdivision is publicly dedicated.
Well, no, but my question is not necessarily, you know, any subdivision.
No, no, but we talked about this with you.
Does, does any subdivision we approve require a public access?
It has to have public access.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know.
And, and Rolando, you're saying that it does because it's a, what, the information we were given is not correct, it's not a private road, it's a public dedicated road.
Well, the map, the map is not correct.
Well, that's the background material. So you're saying-
That's not the only governing factor.
It's public dedicated. Get over here and say it. I want it recorded.
It is publicly dedicated. On the official Fortoland subdivision, it was recorded way a long time ago, forty feet right-of-way.
No, that's fine, I, I'm just, I, I wanna clarify this. So we have no, no option, but I do, Pete, this needs to get going, whatever to see about.
This is, this is a, this is, you know, this can be a, a one-shot issue that we need to talk about in terms of, what I'd like to see you do is, is come with, with the existing rules and regulations. We have existing parameters, and then come up with a, either us, or you coming up with a recommendation. And, and, and don't, you know, don't think about it, you know, don't think about it from the developer's standpoint. Think about it from our standpoint in terms of, of us. So we have today, and then come up with a recommendation of what you think would be adequate to address the concerns that you've heard today. But for now, we, we have this subdivision that, that is being recommended for approval, or the plat. And so I've had a motion by Commissioner Wood already to approve it. I have a second by Commissioner Thamayo. Any further discussion?
I'll keep my mouth shut.
No, you don't have to. I think these are good points, you know, and I think it kind of, I hope it, it gives you some, some insight as to where the court members are, are coming from with this, and just, so start working on, on something. Maybe we may put something back on the agenda to workshop at some time in July.
Yeah, and it just gives us a little time to bring some things together.
I gave you July, I mean, it's a whole month, more than a month.
And we can look at that, Judge, and, and you, that way you all have a chance to look and see what those revisions may be.
Provide them to us, what it is now, and then everybody can provide some input-
Okay.
-as to what we can do, okay?
Sure.
We had a motion, a second. All in favor, say by by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries.
Regretfully aye.
Regretfully aye. Q. Consideration/authorization to pay, to pay for invoice 1369021 from vendor ideas in action the amount of $2,310?
Explanation.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, any here?
Explanation.
Okay. The department put out a bid to receive some immunization promotional caps. And when the bid was received, the low-bid vendor was not able to meet the date to complete for us to receive it. So the employee contacted the second lowest-bidded vendor, and in that conversation, the employee told the vendor that, more than likely, that the department would be working with him, but he needed to get back with them because he needed to continue with the purchasing PO process, and he would advise them, okay? So then, a couple of days passed, I think this was on a Thursday, and then I believe the employee spoke with the vendor on a Monday to, and to ask them if he could meet the deadline, because he needed to figure out what he was, whether, what he was gonna do next. And so when he talked to the vendor that day, the vendor had advised him that he had, they had already started to, to create the caps, because they were very specific to Cameron County, because it says, "Vaccinate your entire family" logo. And the vendor was able to do the logo because about a year or two ago, we had used this specific vendor, and so he already had information on record that he could use to start the, the caps without, you know, getting a PO. And so when the employee found out that the vendor had already started the work, then that's when he contacted purchasing, and purchasing advised the employee that it was a purchase without a PO.
So the request for bid did not say when you needed the item by?
That's correct.
So it was our fault, then?
Yes. Well, it was-
I suggested, well, I have another suggestion, but it, it's too off-the-wall to even bring up right now. In this, on vaccinating, that's a different story. Mike?
Commissioner Garsa, answer your question. These were not bids, these were informal quotes that the department solicited. If it really comes down to, if they have requirements, you're correct, they need to be on the quote sheet. All the requirements need to be on the quote, and if they don't require something-
Whether it's a bid or a quote or whatever, I mean, you know?
And the requirements need to be there, and they shouldn't appear after the fact. And that's, that's where we're at on these. As far as the vendor starting the work, they should be told not to start the work until they have a purchase order.
Well, and, and the first vendor that was a low bid, if he didn't know that they needed to be done by tomorrow-
Exactly.
You know, it's unfair to that vendor.
Exactly, because the parameters are changing as, as the process can, moves ahead. They need to know upfront what the, the, the rules are before they proceed. And we did meet, in all fairness, the event. We, we sat down with the department. Things are always gonna happen, because it's not static. We sat down with about thirty people from the health department last week, the two quotes, and we spent a lot of time with them in a training process, and we went through this as a case.
Well, maybe there should be like one responsible or two in the department for quotes and bids and things of that sort, not thirty. Because if you've got thirty people that are doing this, you know, you've got too many people.
It's not that we have thirty people actually doing it, but, I mean, there's people that receive the items, and so at the warehouse, and they have to have knowledge, you know, of what's being received. There's people that handle the budget, and so they have to have knowledge of the, the process.
Yeah, but the bidding process is one thing, or the quote process is one thing.
Right.
I mean, I, I don't know, I, I just feel that, you know, that-
And really, Commissioner, yes, the best scenario would be to have only a team of people that are performing the purchasing process.
All the way through.
All the way through, but what we have is, we have grant employees that work specifically for the grant, and they are supporting the purchasing process, and so that's why we don't have a general fund purchasing team. You know, we have-
That's Mike Forbes, because he's a resource to the whole county. When we have an issue with any procurement, we call you, and you give us direction.
And I think what, what her objective is in having those people in the room was to give them a good feel as to how the overall process works. And we didn't just talk about purchasing, we, in, in, as far as quotations or bids, we talked about everything to do with the entire goals, the procedures, as, as far as the county has laid out, so that these people, I think her objective was to get them an overall scope of the entire process and, and the requirements of the court as well.
Well, I can see that-
But it was, it was a good venture, because everyone there asked questions. They now see the, you know, what, what led to this scenario, and they know next time what, what needs to be done so that we can try and prevent this from happening next, again.
Well, I think the more information you give them, even though they're not personally involved, I can, I can see where that would be very beneficial, so.
And, and I'm sure down, down the road, there'll be something else come up, and we'll attack it again. I mean, it's an ongoing process.
Well, with that, I make a motion for approval.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Thamayo, same by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please, same by by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries, item y. Consideration/authorization to execute change order number one, 2010-05026 to contract number 2009C10334 awarded to Garko Construction LLC for Los Fresnos Boys and Girls Club, and item Z. Consideration/authorization to execute change order number three, 2010-05027 to the Betterment Allowance Contract number 2009C10334 awarded to Garko Construction for the Los Fresnos Boys and Girls Club. Let's just take them both, because I think they're similar questions.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the first one is just the forty-nine days.
That, that's correct.
Nothing else.
That's correct.
The second one, just for the record, the change order being requested is being paid for by the city of Los Fresnos. It does not impact your budget?
That's correct.
Okay.
The, the half of it, the $2,800, $2,500 is coming from the Betterment Fund, and the remaining balance is coming from the city.
Right, the, the balance of what is not there.
That's correct.
And the only thing we need to be concerned with is there's no more Betterment Fund.
That's correct.
Okay, move to approval.
Same by Commissioner Garsa, same by Commissioner Thamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please, same by by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Before we go to the rest of the agenda, item, let's go ahead and go into executive session. Do I hear motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
By Commissioner Thamayo.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garsa, to discuss, all in favor, same by by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries to discuss. Yeah, table?
Okay, all those items are to be tabled.
Correct, okay. Item A, deliberation regarding real property concerning settlement offer on civil action number 108CV348 in accordance with code section 5500711B. Item B, deliberation regarding real property concerning settlement offer civil action number 08CV466 in U.S. District Court pursuant to code section 550.0711B. Items C, D, E, F, and G will not be discussed. Those will be tabled. As a supplemental agenda, confer Commissioner's Court legal counsel concerning payroll issues at the county and district attorney's office pursuant to code section 551.0712. Do I hear motion by executive session by Commissioner Thamayo? Do I hear a second by Commissioner Garsa? All in favor, same by by saying aye. Any opposed? Adam Carries. On the supplemental, confer Commissioner's Court legal counsel regarding payroll issues, do I hear motion to acknowledge a report of the auditor and legal counsel and proceed along the terms and conditions as discussed?
So moved.
By Commissioner Garsa, same by Commissioner Wood. Any discussion? All those in favor, please, same by by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. On item A, regarding real property concerning settlement offer civil action number 108CV348, do I hear motion to accept the, the counter offer and proceed along the terms and conditions as discussed in the executive session? Moved by Commissioner Garsa. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Thamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please, same by by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries.
No.
Item B, deliberation regarding real property concerning settlement offer civil action number 08CV-466, do I hear motion to accept the settlement offer and proceed along the terms and conditions as discussed in the executive session? Moved by Commissioner Garsa, same by Commissioner Thamayo. All in favor, same by by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries.
No.
Okay. Budget amendments on line item transfers and salary schedules.
Judge Commissioners, you have the budget amendments that were placed in front of you. Page one, we have a budget amendment for Constable Precinct One and for the jail, and that is having to do with equipment purchases that were approved on the equipment list. There's some, there was a, an issue that need, that the only way it can be resolved as far as it getting paid is for the county to pay the invoices directly first, and then we will get, get it through financing proceeds. So the, the finance company that is financing these equipment purchases is going to reimburse the county as soon as we fax some copies of the invoices and a copy of the check. Those-
For everyone now is gonna be that way?
No, just for these two. I'm, I'm not real sure what the, I'm not real sure what the problem was with these two particular purchases, but this is the way that this is gonna have to be worked for right now, on these, on these two particular purchases. The next budget amendment is a, is a grant funding, it's social services block grant. That's an addition of $37,000 of revenue that's coming in, and it's being- an addition of thirty-seven thousand dollars of revenue that's coming in and it's being budgeted in office supplies and equipment. The next page...
Additional, in addition to what was there already?
No, this is a...
It's just being transferred from salaries?
No. It says salaries, but the revenue line item is forty-three hundred, so that is a mis-type.
Okay.
It should be revenue, not salaries.
Okay.
The next page of budget amendments is, the first one is for general admin and that five thousand dollar budget amendment is to cover the redistricting expense for the individual who's handling that particular, the results from the census is there. He begins to work on that. The next budget amendment is for the civil division and that budget amendment is being done from general admin in the 104090 and we are moving fifteen thousand dollars from contractual to cover professional services in the civil division and that is to cover ongoing legal costs. We are doing this budget amendment as opposed to hitting the reserve that we have set up for pending litigation. We have five hundred thousand set up in fund balance for pending litigation and we're doing this before we have to go against that particular reserve. The next budget amendment is for the bail bond. It's minimal. Then we have MNO jail. We have district courts. The budget amendment for the district attorney, we're increasing professional services by sixty-seven hundred dollars and we are hitting the lapsed fringe benefits of health insurance. That particular increase is to cover the current invoice that we have for the forensic panel so we can meet that. Next budget amendment are, for the jail, we are increasing overtime by seventy-one thousand and we are going against lab salaries in the jail division as well. The next budget amendment are just standard MNO for the Rio Hondo Annex, Constable Precinct Two, Constable Precinct Four, Precinct Six, Seven. The next considerably large one is for the juvenile detention and we are moving lab salaries, seventeen thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars worth of lab salaries to cover extra help that they have, they have or going to need. The next one again is for the juvenile department and we are increasing extra help by thirteen thousand and we are taking lab salaries from the juvenile boot camp as well. The next budget amendments, engineering for the HIDA. The last, second to the last page are, those are all basically all grants that we are reallocating funds. The district clerk is utilizing in the child support fund, they're utilizing seventy-four hundred dollars of fund balance. They have more than enough fund balance to cover that. The parks department, there's an increase or we're setting up a budget for equipment for thirty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-two and that is coming out of professional services. That is to purchase, to set up tractor and rakes that are going to be purchased. And I believe this funding is coming in through a grant.
Press?
Right. That's coming in through a grant. So, that's what's being reallocated. The DA's off, I mean, the DA's, the sheriff's department is setting up fourteen thousand dollars worth of additional equipment to be used out of the forfeiture fund. They have more than enough forfeitures to budget for that. Last page is a budget amendment for the district clerk. They're increasing the extra help by ten thousand dollars. Right now, they are over budget by about eight hundred dollars. They are seeking to increase the passport revenue and passport picture revenue by five thousand dollars apiece. I spoke to the district clerk on this. The five thousand dollars that they are increasing these budgeted revenues to, they have already realized that income. Okay? So, they've already met what they are, what they are looking to increase it by. They have incurred, I believe you all received a memo from the district clerk as well as to why she is requesting this increase.
Yeah.
I know that they've had, they've incurred additional cost with the implementation of the Odyssey system and they are continuing to work that and they've had to incur additional cost for that. So, I recommend that approval. The other one is for the contract for the county airport. And that's what we have. There is one salary schedule that is attached and that salary schedule is for, actually, there's two. One is for the HIDA, which is the ONDCP grant funding. That is the 2010 salary schedule that we are presenting to you for approval. The next salary schedule is for Fund 600, which is the DA's pretrial diversion and its reallocation of salaries for your approval.
Do I hear motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo. Do I have a second?
When, I'll second it.
Same by Commissioner Gadsah. Discussion?
On the salaries that are presented on this particular schedules?
Yes.
When you see an annual base salary there, is that the total salary for the individual for the year?
No. Which one are you looking for? We're looking at two. Are you looking at the HIDA one or the...
I'm looking at the HIDA one first.
Okay. That HIDA, that is their salary for the year.
Okay. And then on the next one, is that like a supplement salary?
Those are supplements.
Okay. So, then that would mean that individuals on that page, I mean, their annual salary is not that amount?
That's correct.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carey's claims?
I have claims warrants number 238596 through 239082. I have electronic fund transfers for the health benefits for two hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirteen cents. Payroll for, with a check date of May the 28th for one million six hundred and thirty-seven dollars, one million six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, forty-one dollars and twenty-one cents for your approval.
Any questions on claims? Do I hear motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Wood, same by Commissioner Gadsah. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carey's. Approval of minutes. Court members have the opportunity to review May 10th, 2010 special meeting minutes.
I have.
Do I hear motion to approve?
So moved.
By Commissioner Tamayo, same by Commissioner Wood. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carey's. Item D, discussion of possible action regarding the judicial software integration Odyssey project?
Judge Commissioners, could you... Before we have placed a spreadsheet, it's kind of looks like this. It refers to, has a few rows and columns. This is actually a ninety-day outlook of what we've put together as we move forward into Phase Two of the Odyssey program. We have completed Phase One. It is, has been successfully implemented. We had a few hiccups as we rolled out and went live, but it has been successful. We've had some few complaints, minor, that we've addressed and we continue to move forward. Again, Phase Two is going to consist of hot checks, the law enforcement module, the jail module, prosecutor and case management. To meet the deadline, we are taking somewhat of an aggressive approach so we do need all the commitment from all the departments involved in Phase Two, just considering we need to meet a deadline at the end of the year. The first module that we will be rolling out, actually, we did roll out, is CAD. We already went live. That's the computer aided dispatch at the sheriff's office. It has been fully implemented and it is active as we speak.
When did it start up?
The startup was on CAD. We started up at the end of April, beginning of May.
So, then the gray area?
That's correct, into the gray area. Matter of fact...
Or is it the little X? What does that signify?
Little X signify the actual, the actual process and the actual, the setup that we've done, the system setup, the training and the actual go-live dates. I think in that area, there should have been, looking it over after I printed out, there should have been probably one more area that should have been in gray. But it is, in other words, we did stick to the schedule as to what the X's are as in going through the, from left to right, moving forward. The, because we're taking such an aggressive approach, we might have to start a couple of modules together for, in this case, if you go down to the one, the third column down where it says configuration assessment. It looks like, starting May 17th, we will have to configure jail, law enforcement and prosecutor. I did have a meeting today with the IT team and we might develop a little bit of, I mean, by going this route, it is aggressive. Is it doable? Yes, it's doable. It might be a tough task because of staff. We might not have sufficient staff. Now, we do have the Tyler team that's very involved in this as well, so we're really, really counting on them to come through so we can meet our deadlines.
So, today is the 27th?
That's correct.
So, it already started then?
The, yes, yes. Those assessments have already started, yes. And we are moving forward. But again, you know, we don't, we don't want to waste any time in moving this. In the past, we've learned by our mistakes with Phase One. We had a lot of problems. We dealt with a lot of people. Now, when we do address, when we do encounter a problem, we address it immediately. We try to, you know, correct it. We problem solve. We root cause. We move forward and we, you know, we continue on with the progress. Again, you know, it's a tough task, but it's definitely doable. So, we want to stay on track. Again, this is just a rough draft of what we're going to be looking over the next ninety days. And of course, we will make changes as we go along. We'll keep the court updated as we move forward with the phase, with Phase Two.
Any questions? If not, do I hear motion to acknowledge Mr. Lopez's report?
So moved.
By Commissioner Tamayo, same by Commissioner Gadsah. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carey's. Discussion of possible action?
What possible action were we going to take? Just acknowledge?
Acknowledging, yeah. Or tell them to stop the program, whatever. Discussion of possible action regarding the Carnegie Road Bridge?
Judge Commissioners, after the last meeting, we went back and looked at the different options that we had. We came up with about five different options. We did cost estimates for every option. The ultimate is to do a full repair that would allow fifty thousand pounds. And that's about six hundred thousand dollars. The major problem with the bridge itself is on the north abutment. So, we looked at doing a fix just for the north abutment and that's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. The south abutment has some issues, but today, when the inspection was done, you know, it's okay. But two years from now, when Tech Dot comes back and does their inspection, you know, there'll probably be some problems with it. So, we looked at another option at fixing both the south abutment and the north abutment and that's about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And both would allow a twenty thousand pound usage. So, it'd only be enough until four or five years when Tech Dot would have the funding available to do the complete structure again. The last meeting, Commissioner Wood mentioned some options that Jody at Tech Dot had. So, I got with Jody the following day. And that is utilizing portable bridges. So, we got a couple of vendors from Tech Dot that do portable bridges. To do one for twenty thousand pounds, it's about a hundred and sixty thousand. And those are pre-engineered, designed. And really, the installation is about two to three hours. And going online and looking at the different vendors that Tech Dot provided, there was one vendor that had a portable bridge available. The Kansas Department of Transportation had ordered a bridge, the ten-foot bridge, and then they changed their mind. They wanted a fourteen-foot bridge. So, they have, it's a new bridge, but it was designed for somebody else, but they're willing to allow us to buy that bridge at sixty thousand dollars. However, that's only, their capacity is five tons, which is ten thousand pounds, which would probably be enough, you know, for this location that we're looking at. Then late this afternoon, we come up with a different option and that is, I believe the Drainage District has a three-hundred-foot right-of-way from the center of the canal. And so, I believe if we were to look at this option and we were to convince the Drainage District to allow us about fifty feet of right-of-way, we could probably build a permanent road fifty, sixty feet from the canal itself. You know, the problem we saw with building a temporary road right next to the canal was the danger of a car slipping into the canal. Fifty, sixty feet, probably we still have the same, the same, the same concerns, but it's a little bit further from the canal and we could still look at putting safety devices out there.
You're talking about fifty, is for like from where you're at to that wall over there?
Probably closer than that.
That's like fifty feet?
More or less.
That's a good way. That's a good...
That's utilizing right-of-way that the Drainage District has. We can go even further, but we'd have to acquire right-of-way from a private individual. So, we, that idea just came out, you know, from Lewis late today.
How much, how much would that run?
I would say probably about a hundred thousand, about a hundred thousand. And again, that's just us doing it. If we can get Tech Dot to provide some of the material, then we could cut that cost. But those are the six options that we have.
Why not go to the sixty thousand dollar bridge option? What's the downside to that?
That's temporary?
Well, but there's how many houses on the other side of it?
Two.
And you've talked to the property owner?
Two.
They don't take very much across it. Ten thousand, I mean, ten thousand pound weight, five tons?
Yeah, ten thousand would probably be enough for a...
Well, but there is, on the, on the south side of the bridge, we do maintain that road, probably twenty-five hundred feet past that bridge. So, even our own equipment would need to cross that bridge to continue maintaining the other part of the road.
So, that won't work. Okay?
It's just really on the edge because even, they have propping service and I think they would need about ten, ten thousand, eleven thousand pounds. So, it'd be right, right on the verge. It's, I think it's a good option. I think the normal retail price is about a hundred and twenty thousand, but since they're stuck with that bridge, you know, they're willing to give it to us at half price.
Of course, it has, it should be shipped in from Tennessee.
Right. And then, you know, once we use it, once, four or five years from now, when Tech Dot goes in and does the structure, I mean, we keep that and we could use it at a different location. So, that's an advantage, but...
Well, but this advantage though is, is what type of equipment are you going to need out there that weighs more than ten thousand pounds?
Well, a grader is an example.
But a grader doesn't weigh more than ten thousand pounds?
Or a truck. A grader?
No, the only thing that might...
A grader...
Right on the line, yeah.
A grader, a grader weighs ten thousand pounds. Easy. Five tons?
Yeah, and it doesn't have traffic because it's only two houses and there's only one family, you know, that probably goes in and out twice, three times at the most.
How about, any buses, school buses?
No.
Not yet, but as of this next, this coming fall, there will be.
Okay, well...
Then you've got buses.
Because a loaded bus is way over ten thousand.
Yeah, no, we'd have to go at least a minimum of twenty.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, so...
I know there's a, there's a child that is going into...
Well, then that's not going, okay, well, that's not going to work. That's not going to work.
Do we have a recommendation from you all?
No, I think what we would, if we had a recommendation, I think it'd be for us to look at building a road, getting with the Drainage District, see if they would allow us to utilize their right-of-way. The more, the southern fifty foot of their right-of-way, I would, I would prefer that option as opposed to, well, I guess the fifth option on the portable bridge, that's only five tons that's out if we have a school bus. So, for a new portable bridge, twenty thousand pounds is about a hundred and sixty thousand. So, I think, I think we all give us another couple of days until the next meeting. We'll sit down with the Drainage District, maybe tomorrow or next Tuesday, and run that idea by them.
The money to do this is going to come from where?
At this point, it probably has to come from reserve.
It's got, yeah, it's got, you've got no more money in Roden Bridge.
And again, I think if we do a road, you know, I'll try and get as much material from Tech Dot as it can.
Because we have enough days of operations in the surplus for Roden Bridge to be able to tap into that.
So, let me make sure that I understand this. Are we continuing with the temporary road as we have been for the last week?
Yes.
I mean, that is being, as we speak, not right now, but today, was being worked on. I mean, that is being, as we speak, not right now, but today, was being worked on. So the temporary road is not being delayed in any way, shape or form?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, because we were out there yesterday and we're working on it. Okay.
Probably tomorrow, separating some minutes in there.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, do I hear motion to acknowledge Mr. Sipolo with his report? And again, put it back on the agenda when you're ready. Pete, do I hear motion? By Commissioner Tamayo, signed by Commissioner Wood?
Put it back on the agenda as soon as we can.
Yeah. Whenever he's ready to make a final recommendation. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Adam Carey's. We have a few change orders. Item F through I. Do you all want to take them all together? Any questions on any of them? Or do you want to just listen to one by one?
That's within budget and everything?
Yes, ma'am, it is. The first 41 through 44 total up to $5,611. Item J is simply a transfer of monies from one allowance to another.
Okay. Do I hear motion to approve the change orders as outlined on the agenda? Items F, G, H, I and J?
You know, are, are these just like things that we have to do because somebody?
There are field issues that have cropped up.
That were not on the plans?
That are unforeseen.
Like void over the door. I mean, what did they expect would be there?
Well, the, the, the structure and the way it's come together, and there's these small chase doors to avoid putting masonry up there and having the masonry crack on you every time the door's going to get closed or shut or something like that. We went with an option to use steel plate. So in a sense, it's not that the detail was never there, but we are trying to improve on a detail that wasn't going to work.
Now, you did say it's within budget.
Yes, ma'am.
And then like.
Everything I have brought is, is within the contract budget and I have not, and you will know when I do, if, and hopefully I won't.
Like a shaft wall, a two-hour shaft wall is an example. You know, I mean, that was not a requirement in the design? I mean, I, I just keep seeing all these things that.
Tell me what IOCC that one is?
That's I, number 44. You know, I keep seeing all these things and they all seem to be, that they should be the responsibility of the designer, not contingency fund. You know, I mean, this is installing a two-hour shaft wall on top of the CMU public visitation wall to maintain the two-hour rating. Well, heck, if a two-hour rating was required, it should have been planned that way. And if there was a barge joint running along that wall, they should have known there was a barge joint because they did the design. But yet, here we are having to pay for the fix. And it's like, all of them are fixes because of design flaws.
All I can tell you, Commissioner, is you're not, you're not going to get a perfect set of drawings on any job. And this job is no different. And that is why we have included this contingency in the contract to address some of these items. And we can, I'll be glad to bring the architect in next time I'm here so we can start to discuss some of this. But that, that's what's happening. We're, we're running into items, construction items in the field that.
Well, at the last meeting, it was the amperage on the fuse, okay?
Yes.
And there's a major expense. And, and we said, hey, you know, they should have known how much amperage would be required to facilitate that building.
And that letter, with their explanation for that, has, well, I believe I've already given it to the administrator's office.
For anybody that's built a home or a building, you know that, how many times did you change your, when you built your home?
Reduce the amount.
Reduce, a bet. But nonetheless, you changed it. I mean, those things change. You recommend these, obviously?
Yes, sir.
I've made a motion, haven't I?
Yeah, no motion yet.
No motion yet. So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gadsden, seconded by Commissioner Tamayo. I didn't hear.
I guess I was thinking of.
You were thinking the motion. On items all the way through J, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Adam Carey's. Consideration, item K, appointment seven, Board of Directors to Cameron County Child Welfare Board. Everybody, I gave you the last one that I had, Minnie Martinez.
All I'm missing is Commissioner Gadsden.
And I have one for you. Mayor Joe Vega from Port Isabel.
And I'm just missing Commissioner Benavides.
Okay.
So do you, Judge, you want me to bring them all back once I have everybody's name? Or just?
No, I think we approve them once as we go, yeah. Because they need to get started.
Okay, so then.
And they can get started without having everybody on board.
Then you need to vote also on Ms. Almarrendon, which was Commissioner Woods' appointment, and your appointment, which was Minnie.
Minnie Martinez.
So just say those three names.
Okay, Minnie Martinez, Joe Vega and Almarrendon to be appointed to the Cameron County Child Welfare Board. So that gives us six.
Six.
So we're missing just one.
And when she has her name, then I'll put it back. I won't just automatically put it on next week.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Gadsden, by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Adam Carey's. Can you call Melba and let her know that we've got six and so they can start meeting if they need to do that?
Do I need to provide you the information for that individual?
No, yeah, if you can find them. And they don't know when they want to set something up for me to swear a man, I think they want me to swear the man. So just kind of figure that out, okay? Item L, consideration authorization to approve the purchase and installation of equipment and software for the park management toll collection system utilizing the Revenue Markets, Inc. as a sole source provider. Are we ready to go with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I hear motion? Yeah, let's do L and M distributors.
And Mike Forbes is okay with all this, right?
Mike, you're okay with that? Quit huddling. Okay, all right. Move on, move on item L and then also on item M. Consideration authorization to execute contract 2010 CO5202 with Revenue Markets. Moved by Commissioner Gadsden. Do I have a second? By Commissioner Tamayo. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Adam Carey's. Item N, consideration authorization to hold a public hearing to discuss grant funding and possible use of funds for the Justice Assistance Grant, JAG. 2010 local solicitation from the U.S. Department of Justice, no, no, Department of the Interior, no, Department of Justice's Bureau of Justice Assistant. Frank? Do I hear motion to open public hearing? Moved by Commissioner Wood, signed by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. We're in a public hearing.
Judge and Commissioners, we, we have $40,000 in this application cycle. We requested proposals from law enforcement and criminal justice departments of the county. We have good news because we got three proposals and everything's within budget.
Perfect. Okay.
Renee Gadsden was within budget?
He's part of the budget now.
I know. I mean, you didn't go like for the whole enchilada?
No, you just, you just knew better. You've learned. All right. This is a public hearing.
That's a public hearing.
Anybody from the public wish to address the court? Do I hear motion to close public hearing? By Commissioner Tamayo, signed by Commissioner Wood. Discussion, favor, aye. Any opposed? Adam Carey's. Item O, consideration approval of the use of funds for Cameron County Justice Assistance Grant. Do I hear motion to approve as recommended by Mr. Bejarano, moved by Commissioner Gadsden, seconded by Commissioner Wood. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Adam Carey's. Last item, consideration, possible action regarding reimbursement from FEMA?
You've got the money.
Sorry to be the burden of bad news, Commissioners. I, I did have the opportunity to speak with the few folks that are actually overlooking this project last week in West, in McAllen. And I know due some unfortunate circumstances with, with the chief and his passing. And I know they've been, and also with the hurricane conference, a lot of the staff was designated to there. I know they're back on track. There is a representative here in town. We've been working together, but unfortunately, we still haven't received any funds. Not to say that we're not, not to say that we're not trying to, to get where we need to be, so we're.
Do I hear motion to acknowledge? Seconded by Commissioner Wood, signed by Commissioner Gadsden. Any discussion?